Hey Joe, you might maybe just shut the door for us in the hallway.
This way?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to open the December 10th, 2024, meeting of the Nashua, City of Nashua zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. I'll go through a little bit of introductory remarks, housekeeping, and explain a little bit about how we'll conduct the meeting, and then we'll get into the cases before us tonight. So there are, I'll just actually start with the Board itself here and who's represented. So myself, again, is the Chair. Mr. Steve Lionell is our Vice Chair. Mr. JB Boucher, our Clerk. Mr. Josh Neely and Jamie McCarr are other full-time members. We have five full-time members on the Board, and then Mr. Sylvia and Mr. Patry are our alternate members. We will, all of us will participate in the activity of listening to the presentations, asking questions, and even discussing about the potential ways that we feel about the case and how we might want to ultimately vote. But because we have the five full-time members, they'll be the ones that are voting all the cases unless one of them needs to refuse themselves, and then one of the alternates will be in their place. But, so if you were just wondering, that's the kind of mechanics of how we operate. And then Mr. Carter Falk is a Deputy Planning Manager with the city, and he is here to help consult and provide guidance for us as well on the case law, the ordinances, and guide us through the business of the meeting as well. I'll go ahead and just do our attendance to make sure I don't forget that. So Mr. Lionell.
Here.
And Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. McCarr.
Present.
Mr. Sylvia.
Present.
And Mr. Patry.
Present.
And Mr. Shaw is present. So that's, all of us on the Board are present, and again, I've already noted Mr. Falk's attendance with us. Basically, the zoning Board is a quasi-judicial body for the city where we are asked to provide relief to the land use code ordinances and act accordingly to the requests that are made. We mostly hear requests in the form of variances or special exceptions. Tonight, we only have variances in front of us, so I won't bother going into any details about the special exceptions. And we do have a rehearing request as well, which is one of the, it's probably the third kind of most active type of items that we get. And I'll allude to those. Those are basically when somebody disagrees or feels that we have erred in our decision-making, made what would be procedurally an illegal motion, those kind of things. And I'll usually try to note that when we're wrapping up each case after a decision's been made, but this is a normal process. We do have one of those in front of us, but there is no public interaction on rehearing requests, unlike the variances where there are. The variances are, and those of you that are presenting would know just by doing the application, it's kind of structured in a way where we're looking for feedback on five primary criteria that needs to be met to have this Board feel that there is sufficient justification for why something that you're requesting should be allowed to be done when it's normally not allowed to by the code. So we look for that testimony to be presented that guides us for the reasons why those five criteria are being met, to then provide us the opportunity to vote in favor of an application. If we feel that there's some aspect of that criteria that's not sufficiently met, then the Board needs to find that it's not sufficient and we can't approve the request. We will always act on a case that's before us. Sometimes we will table a case to a future meeting if there's some reason that there might be additional information that everybody feels would be useful or helpful, but most of the time, we will act on rendering a decision of either passing or denying the request while we're here tonight. The, the way we also go through the case is we ask the applicant to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have up to 15 minutes to present your case and tell us what you're trying to do again, and usually the focus is on that criteria and how you're meeting that. The Board will likely have some questions, but not always. It depends. Sometimes the cases are so thorough or so straightforward that we don't necessarily need to clarify or delve into something further, but we very well often do with some cases. So we will then, after that testimony's been given, you can have a seat, and we'll seek to see if there's anybody else that's in favor of a case that's before us tonight. They can come up and have five minutes to address the Board for that additional testimony. Until there's no more people in favor, then we ask for if there's anybody with questions, opposition, or concerns about the application to come forward. Likewise, each of those individuals has up to five minutes. If there is some of that, basically, testimony that's with those concerns, questions, opposition, then we'll seek the applicant to come back up for rebuttal, and there's a five-minute sequence for both of those. Based on the amount of people I see in the audience, it seems unlikely we're even going to see any additional testimony, but we can cover that if it happens. But right now, like I said, I feel like we're unlikely to get to even that part of the way we conduct our business. So I think, trying to keep this as short as possible, I think that covers the key information. Anything that the Board feels I neglected? Mr. Falk, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay.
Might you mention about how if somebody disagrees, they can appeal?
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to, but yeah, I'll stay at the end of the cases. But that's that, there is the 30-day window of appeal, so we try to note it at the end of each case, but it's a good reminder upfront here in case we forget, that if you feel, as the applicant, if we did not, you know, act in favor of your application, and you feel that we did something, again, that was, that is basically, that wasn't based on proper procedures, or with the right information, or whatever, you can file that rehearing request. Likewise, if somebody has a concern, they don't have to be present at this meeting either, maybe a neighbor, here's, after the fact, and questions what we did and what you're doing, they could still file within 30 days. You have to put a written request into the city, and that has to go through the Planning Department, so as long as that's received within the 30 calendar days, then that would then come back to us for rehearing. The decision that we made, if it was in favor and it was being contested, would get basically put on hold until we could establish the action through a rehearing request. So that's kind of pretty much how that works. With that, what we do is we basically read into the record the cases. We start typically in order, unless there's some special reason we need to adjust the order, but we have the four cases as I noted. I'll just go through, starting with case number one. I'll read that into the record, and meanwhile, whoever is going to present for that case, you're welcome to work your way up to the podium. The only other thing, just one quick housekeeping, I know we're all kind of used to it these days in some regards, but, and almost everybody has a cellphone, so if you could please put that on silent or vibrate, that would be helpful. And also, the acoustics in here are very good, so we ask anybody if you've got conversations to have during the meeting, to just step out in the hallway, otherwise it gets picked up here and it can be very distracting, so. All right, with that, I will read case number one into the record. The owners are Dominic N. and Stacy DeRoziers. The applicants are Robert E. and Lisa Dawn Ballinger, 65 Thornton Road, Sheet H, Lot 580, requesting the following variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum lot frontage where 100 feet is required, 70 feet is proposed. Number two, for minimum lot width where 120 feet is required, 79.7 feet is proposed. And for the third one, for the minimum right side yard setback where 20 feet is required, 14.9 feet is proposed. All requests are to relocate a lot line between 65 Thornton Road and 1 White Oak Drive to satisfy a private pre-existing fence line agreement that has been in effect since 2008. This is in the R18 Zone, Ward 2. Welcome, and tell us, again, your name and address for the record, and then what you're trying to do.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman and ZBA Board members. My name is Lisa Ballinger, and I'm here with my husband, Robert Ballinger. The two of us, along with our family, reside at 1 White Oak Drive in Nashua. We're here on behalf of and with the permission of our next-door neighbors, the DeRoziers. They actually, part of the package is a signed letter where they've authorized us to appear on their behalf, and they're the owners of 65 Thornton Road. And again, you've already stated where it was located on the sheet, and you've already discussed the three variances that we're seeking at this point in time. It should be noted that we are seeking those three variances, but the property located at 65 Thornton Road will conform in all other areas. It'll have 19, approximately 19,000, or almost 20,000 square feet where 18,000 square feet is required. It'll have 61 feet of front yard where 20 feet is required, and 78% of open space whereas 50% is required. We purchased our home at 1 White Oak Drive in August of 2020 with an existing fully fenced-in backyard. A review of aerial images show that the fence was constructed sometime between April of 2004 and December of 2006. The fence, or a similar one, remains today and encroaches over the property owned by the DeRoziers. The DeRoziers and the prior owners reached that land accord in 2008. Bob and I, as well as the DeRoziers, have agreed to pursue a lot line adjustment to formalize the situation that has been in existence for about 20 years. We have a significant portion of the yard between our two driveways, and the lot line adjustment will simply swap pie-shaped pieces of land to make our properties look exactly how you would think they're already situated. However, to do so means that 65 Thornton Road would technically be non-conforming with frontage with end-side setback requirements. As the properties are located in an R18 district, which includes among its permitted uses, single-family detached dwellings with one principal structure on a lot, the properties will continue to have single-family dwellings with one principal structure on each lot. 65 Thornton Road is currently about a half-acre lot and will continue to be approximately a half-acre lot. And as you're all aware, our 18 district has a minimum lot area requirement of 18,000 square feet, and this will still be approximately almost 22,000 square feet. The block on which both properties is located include only single-family homes. The requested variance pertains only to one property. Our property technically will still be conforming in all areas. We're in agreement, all of us, my husband and I, and Stacy and Dominic, and the granting of the variance eliminates a hardship inherently created 20 years ago and formalizes an agreement that's been performed for almost 20 years. The granting of the variance corrects the hardship that was created, doesn't create any further hardships on either party. It doesn't create any hardships in the neighborhood, nor does it create any issues for the general public, and it actually prevents future hardships on 1 White Oak and, you know, future disputes between property owners. The granting of this variance will result in one partially non-conforming lot, but it'll be of similar dimension and will continue to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood as a whole. We attach to our variance application pictures of the property, so you could see, if you happen to drive by, we did notice the property appropriately. We had the signs and put those in on time. You'll see that the fence goes along what you would think would be our property line, but actually it goes over, hence the requirement to swap out those pie-shaped pieces in the future, assuming our variance is granted. Let's see here. Our house at 1 White Oak has an existing single-family home, and that fence that encroaches, I'm trying not to be redundant, so I apologize. The variance requested for this one lot will eliminate that hardship, prevent future hardships, maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. And again, that, we didn't create that hardship. The current hardship was pre-existing, and the lot line adjustment will result in two properties that, again, have that similar integrity and will both have fair-sized yards. Both properties will meet density requirements, lot depth requirements, and rare setback requirements. These variances are unfortunately, though, necessary, given the agreement for the parties for that lot line. Again, this variance affects only us, the DeRoziers. We're all in complete agreement. With regard to the criteria, we believe that all criteria are met. The properties will not be contrary to the public interest. Both properties will be consistent with all similarly sized parcels in the neighborhood and consistent with the city's master plan and land use codes objective, which is to help facilitate upgrades and renovations to existing dwellings. Both properties are well-maintained, and both properties have existing fully fenced-in backyards. We'll also maintain the spirit of the ordinance by allowing this variance. There'll be no new infrastructure, because no new infrastructure is needed. Everything will remain the same. There'll be, in fact, no observable changes in the neighborhood upon granting of this variance. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance, codifying the very situation agreement that has been in place for almost 20 years, and this will affect no other lots in the neighborhood. The proposed use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties, and both properties' values will be enhanced by their respective lot lines being formally clarified in this longstanding neighborhood agreement. And essentially, from our standpoint, our request for the proposed variances are reasonable. So we're asking for the variance on minimum lot frontage width and side setback variances for 65 Thornton. Given that the property will still have that sufficient area, density, depth, and rare setbacks, and are consistent with the neighborhood, a denial of these variances will not advance the goals of the land use code and will actually frustrate their overall purpose, and the codification of the agreement between the owners of 1 White Oak and 65 Thornton Road will only enhance the properties and the immediate neighborhood. Again, our requested variance, we believe, is very reasonable, affects no other properties, no butters will be affected in any manner, nor will the general public be affected. So we respectfully request that our variance be granted, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. I tried to shorten our application down, but I apologize for a little bit of redundancy.
No, that's fine, and, you know, it was a pretty thorough application, which we always appreciate. I just, I have one kind of just question more about how the procedure of things works is, are you waiting for this variance to go into effect before you can actually pursue the lot line adjustment and the re-deeding, or however that works with the properties?
Correct. Yeah, we're trying to get the variance first, and then if it's granted, then we'll move forward before the Planning Board and get the lot line adjustment. And we have, we've used Hayner Swanson, they've provided the plan. They'll create the new plan in the future, which will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds as well.
Okay, thank you. I just, yeah, I wasn't quite sure how that worked and what, you know, kind of, all that, so. Does the Board have any other questions? Mr. Lionell?
I just, as a matter of curiosity, when you purchased the, your house, were you aware of this private agreement?
We, yes, it wasn't hidden from us. We did find out, and there is the agreement that's in existence, so we were aware of it at the time. We did purchase during 2020 when there was a shortage of properties existing, so we did purchase it subject to that agreement that was already in existence.
Okay, I was just wondering.
And just to add, Robert Ballinger, co-applicant, 1 White Oak Drive, Nashua. The previous owner fully disclosed the matter to us, and prior to purchasing, we actually had an opportunity to meet with the owners of 65 Thornton Road, and they basically agreed at that time, they were okay with keeping the existing agreement. So this is, this is essentially just a matter of formalizing, again, what is an agreement that has coexisted between the two properties for close to two decades now, but I hope that adds some clarification.
Oh, it does. It was just a matter of curiosity. So many times, these things are not disclosed when people buy houses. We've had many cases like that before, so, okay, thank you.
I do believe the agreement that is enacted doesn't necessarily carry through to all future owners of the property. I think it's very specific to the people, and that's another reason that we're asking for this variance, because if they were to sell in the future, that new owner may not have to abide by that agreement, and that would be very problematic and would be a significant hardship to us.
Absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate everyone's time.
Does anybody else here that's present want to testify regarding the 65 Thornton Road property? Anybody here that has questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody want to offer an initial reaction, thoughts? Mr. Neely, you look like you're ready.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this application. Fences make great neighbors, but fence lines can certainly cause a lot of problems, as these folks have discovered. I think it's a great idea to codify this. Everybody's in agreement. The packet, I mean, I could, when we go through this, I'm going to quote part of this package, it was so well put together. So the substantial justice piece is critical, as they just stated when they were walking away, you know, a new neighbor next door could really cause some issues. So it's a great idea to get it codified, and so for those reasons, I'm fully in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionell?
Yeah, I'm also in favor, really much the same reasons as Mr. Neely. It is absolutely the right thing to do to prevent trouble down the road.
Mr. McCarr?
I agree, and would just also note that there certainly are special conditions on these property, on the subject property, both due to its shape and the encroachment, and, you know, obviously, there is no change to the existing conditions proposed. It's merely correcting an issue that's existed for 20 years.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Lionell.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Dominic and Stacy DeRoziers. The applicant is Robert, applicants are Robert and Lisa Dawn Ballinger. This is for the address of 65 Thornton Road, Sheet H, Lot 580. Requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. First, for minimum lot frontage, 100 feet required, 70 feet proposed. Second, for minimum lot width, 120 feet required, 79.7 feet proposed. And third, for a minimum right side yard setback, 20 feet required, 14.9 feet proposed. All requests to relocate a lot line between 65 Thornton Road and 1 White Oak Drive to satisfy a private pre-existing fence line agreement that has been in effect since 2008. This is in the R18 Zone, Ward 2. The Board finds the variance is needed to enable applicants' proposed use of the property. When this property was initially, these lots were initially laid out, they, later, a fence was added that did not conform to the lot line, and the owners had a private agreement between them to accept that, except that the, if there are a change in ownership in the future might jeopardize this private agreement. And so the Board believes that this, these variances and realigning of the lot line are necessary to prevent problems in the future, and the Board does not think that there's any other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The Board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no, could be no actual changes to the properties, and it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It should have no effect on them whatsoever. It's not contrary to public interest. Substantial justice will be served all around by removing a potential legal cloud from both property owners now and in the future. So I make a motion to approve these three variances.
Mr. second by Mr. McCarr. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That passes unanimously, 5-0. So feel free to go ahead and proceed, but as noted, there is that 30-day window of appeal. Seems highly unlikely that would happen, and certainly if you have any questions, contact us. Good luck. All right, so we will move on to case number two, is owner, PM, and DA, Revard Revocable Trust. The address is 3 Salem Street, 42 Lot 101. The request for the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-31, Section A. First is minimum rear yard setback where six feet is required, two feet is proposed. Number two, for minimum right side yard setback, six feet required, four feet proposed. Both requests are to replace an eight-foot by eight-foot shed with a 10-foot by 12-foot shed. And the third variance is from Land Use Code Section 190-17, Section E, subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width where 24 feet is permitted, 27 feet is proposed. This is in the RC Zone, Ward 3. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Paul Revard from 3 Salem Street, and those numbers are new to me. My property is 50 feet by 57 feet. The house takes up half of that property. The yard is currently fully paved, so the paving variance is because from the, at the street, from the house to the fence is 27 feet, and all I want to do is replace the, and it's only allowing 24, all I want to do is replace the existing tar all the way to the street. There's also two cement holes at the corners of the driveway, so it's just going to work right into that. As far as the shed goes, I just need a bigger shed for more clearance. I need to have enough room for four cars, because the wife and I both have a car. I have a granddaughter who lives there who's going to college, and I have a grandson who goes to UNH, comes home every now and then, and he'll live with, he doesn't come home, he'll stay with us. So it's four cars, if you get too wide, too deep, I can't really get a bigger shed and bring it out towards the street. I have to go back, and with a six-foot variance, bringing it down to two, I can get a four-foot larger shed, and in back of that is a fence, and on the other side of the fence is the parking lot for the neighbor's driveway, or for the neighbor's house. It's an apartment house, that's their parking lot. On the other side, there's a fence, and I'm just trying to bring it four feet, just to gain two feet on that side. So I'm just trying to make use of the land I have. The tar itself right now is fully sloped. If you, there was a picture in it, if you looked at it, everything, it's about a 12-to-18-inch slope from the backyard to the street. Everything runs, all water runs towards the street. So replacing the driveway is just replacing the tar, exactly what it exists now. Water runoff would be towards the street, so it doesn't affect the neighbor's house on one side. On the other, my house is the other side. The shed positioning is just to get a larger shed, because if you look at a picture, I actually have a tarp. It's got PVC with a little tarp over it, just to try to get extra storage in there, and I just need to get rid of that, because that, it's basically bungee-corded to the fence, so it doesn't fall away, but I'd like to get rid of that, because it shouldn't be there anyways. Keeping the distance between the house and the shed is also kind of necessary, because that's where I put my grill in the summer. So if I tried to go closer to the house, now I get the fire hazard, because it's only, I think, 17 feet from the house to the shed, and putting a grill in that spot, it's also where I have the only place to put snow. I can't push the snow to the neighbor's driveway behind. I can't push the snow to the fence of my neighbor on that side. My house is on this side, and in the street, there's a parking lot across the street, so I only have a snowbank to be able to throw it from my driveway and not put it in the street, but just add to that snowbank. There's very limited parking on the street. I got one spot in front of my house, one in front of the neighbor's. There's no parking on the other side of the street, because it's, it's two-way, but there's just, you don't have room for parking. So I need the space for parking. I'm not trying, the bigger shed is for storage. I'm only trying to get it back a little so it doesn't affect my driveway parking, and my tar is just to replace what's already there, as that was also in a picture. So I'm not, I don't think I'm asking for too much, but I'm going to let you guys ask your questions, and I don't have all of these other numbers. She was good.
One thing you didn't note, but is in your application, you have the image that shows many other sheds in your neighborhood that are...
Yes. In my neighborhood, there are many properties that are very small, and a lot of people put up the put up the sheds without permits. And I think you probably know that happens all over. And in that picture, you will see, there may be some of them that are permitted with variances, but I think I pointed out probably 20 sheds in that general vicinity that are all within two or, two feet or up against the property line.
So, I mean, I think basically your testimony is that you're just doing something that's very similar to what many of your neighbors are doing.
I don't want to say if they do it wrong. I'm not allowed to do it wrong. I'm just trying to say I'd like to.
Not whether they have the variance or not, but at least existing, you're just doing something that's consistent with the neighborhood.
I'm just trying to do it right for what I'm trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have questions? Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah. Couple of questions. So you said that the current shed is attached to the fence by a bungee?
No, the shed is sitting on top of the tar.
So what's the bungee attached to again?
There is a, I had to have extra storage for my grills and snowblower, depending upon time of year, because an eight-by-eight shed with shelving and tools, there's no room. So what I did was I put PVC into a little house formation, covered it with a tarp, and bungee corded it to the fence, and I put it between the shed and the fence.
So it's kind of an annex to the shed, basically?
Yeah. It's on the side of the shed. There's a picture from the street view that you can see the shed, and if you look to the right, you see what looks like a house, but all that is, is PVC covered by a tarp. And I could pick it up and walk away with it. That's how I basically put it there. So to stop it from flying away, I put bungee cords just to hold it to the fence.
Okay. And the new area within the new shed would basically take the place of that?
Yes, I wouldn't need that at all. That goes completely gone. It would just be the shed. That ever's, that would give me enough space I would need for everything else.
Okay. Have your neighbors at 1 Essex Street, or, excuse me, 1 Salem Street, or your rear neighbor on Toll Street said anything about this?
The neighbor on Toll Street hasn't, because it's basically, to them, it's the parking lot. It's the fence to the parking lot. So they've got their cars, they pass, basically, their cars are right towards the fence where I've got the, to the fence, then my shed.
So they wouldn't carry it away?
They wouldn't carry it away. On the other side, they basically park their car on the other side of the fence. Their parking consists of one car, literally, up against the fence in the house, which is, they've got the same problems I do.
Okay.
They have to park there. On the Whitney Street side, there's a little cutout where there's a porch, they park a car there, and their third car, they actually have, I think they have allowance to put it on the street overnight.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it's an apartment house, one apartment has that little corner cut out there, they got one over there and then, in their little, on the side of my driveway, and the third one is in the street. There's no parking in that neighborhood.
Okay, so they would understand your situation?
Oh, yes. They know it. I had also explained to him everything I was doing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted to go back and confirm one other thing. So basically, the driveway, the 27-foot-wide driveway has been in existence for a very long time already?
Yeah, well, I don't even know how long it's been paved, but right now, the pavement was put in two inches thick. There is a picture of the driveway from the street.
I'm just trying to establish, this has been a pre-existing wide driveway?
Well, it's pre-existing. You can tell from the condition of the driveway that it has, you take your snowblower or your shovel, and you can't go straight, because you hit the crack, and you just jam into it. So I just got to fix the driveway. And it's, driveway looks terrible. It's cracked, and it's got frost eaves.
All right, thank you. I think we're all set. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application at 3 Salem Street? Is there anybody in the audience that has questions, concerns, or opposition to 3 Salem Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Bushay?
I'm going to support this application. The driveway, again, I just refer to the National GIS map. Driveway, I think that the latest map, we say it's 2006, the driveway was there, so I know it's been there for a while. And as the applicant said when I went by, you could tell that that's been existing for a while. The shed, I think, is reasonable ask for a larger shed. Again, notice in the neighborhood, you know, how tight it is and what it would exist. Doesn't affect a neighbor in the back, again, it's a parking lot. So again, what's unique about that area, as the applicant stated, it's, you know, smaller lots, pretty tight. So I think it's reasonable to continue to use the property, the driveway, the way it is, and the extra square footage on the shed and the, you know, the distance to the encroachment, I think, again, for this, for this application, to me, I'm comfortable with, and I don't, I think it fits into the neighborhood.
Anybody else want to comment? Mr. McCullough?
I also support the application. I mean, obviously, these are very small lots, and I don't think I see a building that meets current setback requirements in the neighborhood, much less the sheds. You know, the homes don't either. There's no further encroachment, and so there really isn't any public benefit to applying the setback requirements with regard to the driveway. You know, I don't know, I would have originally said okay to going right up to the property line, but in this case, it's pre-existing, and there's just no benefit to saying, tear up a three-foot strip, and obviously, it needs to be renewed.
I'm just going to also note that, as far as the shed goes, I appreciate the fact that there is still some clearance to the property line, and that means some accessibility, so versus, you know, the applicant could have proposed to put it right up at kind of zero feet, but I think it's a reasonable kind of compromise. It's that whole idea of kind of pushing it into the back corner of a property, but providing enough access that it makes for a reasonable position. So, all things considered, I think that was also, you know, at least to me, a good kind of compromise to not asking for full encroachment, but providing some, you know, remaining setbacks. So, would anybody like to make a motion on behalf of the applicant? Mr. McCullough, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of PM and DA Revard Revocable Trust, owners of 3 Salem Street, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-31A. One, minimum rear yard setback, six feet required, two feet proposed. And two, minimum right side yard setback, six feet required, four feet proposed. Both requests to replace an eight-by-eight shed with a 10-by-12 shed. And three, a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 27 feet proposed, be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We found that the special conditions are primarily the very small size of the lot and the fact that it really is consistent with the setbacks in the surrounding neighborhood. There just aren't properties in the area that meet the setback requirements. And with regard to the driveway, it is a pre-existing driveway. It's clearly been in this condition for some time, and there does not appear to be any negative impact to the public or any surrounding uses, so there really would be no benefit to having a portion of that driveway removed. And also, I add that the size of the shed, eight-by-12, is reasonable. Obviously, having a shed is a reasonable use, and there realistically isn't anywhere else to put it that wouldn't either infringe on the ability to park or limit what little yard area there is available. We find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance to offer a reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We have had no testimony to that effect, and there's really very little change in terms of impact to others. It will not be contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice will be done in that there really is no public benefit to denying the ability to have a reasonably-sized shed. The burden to the property owner is clearly, would be greater than any gain to the public, and substantial justice will be done for the same reasons.
Mr. Neely, thank you for a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a very brief comment. When Mr. McCullough was going through the first point of law, I thought you'd say eight-by-12, but where the request is for 10-by-12. You correctly said it when you were reading out the variance. It was just in the discussion about why the board was thinking it was reasonable.
I may have misspoke, so I stand corrected.
Yeah, I don't think that it matters, but in case it did, I wanted to mention it.
Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor? That passes unanimously, 5-0. Similar guidance, you're welcome to move forward. Your application has been approved, but there is a, you know, a remote possibility that somebody could, you know. Yeah, as far as the permits and the, yes. Yeah, but you've now been authorized by this board that you can move forward in the process, yeah. So, good luck with your project. If you have any questions, contact Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. We'll move on to case number three. The owner is Austin Gooden. The address is 11 Hampton Drive, Sheet F, Lot 577. The requested variance is from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 22 feet into the 40-foot required rear yard setback to construct an 11-foot by 31-foot roofed cover over an existing deck. This is in the R18 cluster zone, Ward 1. Welcome, name and address for the record, and tell us what you're doing.
I am Austin Gooden. I live at 11 Hampton Drive, and what I, I came in here several years ago for a variance to put up a deck, a large deck, and it was approved. And I'm coming back in now to put a cover over half of it. And they said, I didn't understand why I need to do it again, but I do. So, the proposed use is basically, I had cancer, I've been free of it, but I don't spend much time outside. My wife is a sun goddess, and so the deck is primarily for her to place herself anywhere she wants and sun herself, and this deck, this cover, about 12-foot cover, will allow me to be outside with her. That's the primary purpose, not beyond that. It's not going to harm anybody. The property behind me is a common land area that can't be used for anything. My neighbors on either side of me have no problem with it. The one neighbor that might have, he's not here. And I guess, I guess that's it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of information, obviously, in the packet, so let me see if the board has any questions for you, and does anybody have any questions? Yeah, all right, you can have a seat, and we'll see if there's any other testimony. Thank you. Does anybody, is anybody else present wish to testify in favor of the application at 11 Hampton Drive? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application at 11 Hampton Drive? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this application. This is, this is pretty straightforward. They have a very large deck. They've been here before. I think this is actually a pretty neat project, only have half of that deck, which is a very large deck, covered by the shade, but certainly, as the applicant noted, they're not affecting anybody. There is that common land, the woods, the common land right behind them. It's not going to affect any, any property values around them. In fact, most folks probably aren't even going to notice, you know, doing a drive-by. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
It looked like, from the minutes of the previous variance application, that there were some people in opposition, and they're not here tonight, so I'd assume that they're probably fine, like, with this, as the applicant said, so I just wanted to note that. If I could vote, I'd vote in support of this.
Any other board comments?
Mr. Bushay? I'm in support of the application's structure. I think, again, I was here when we approved this application, and, you know, what's a little unique about this is it's a real, it's a built deck, and they're looking for more of a permanent structure. I mean, obviously, they, you know, some folks would buy those awnings that stretch out, but I think because of the design of the house and what they're looking at, I think it's reasonable, and I don't think it's something that would cause any problems with neighborhood, and again, buts the common land. So I don't see any, any reason why not to approve the application, so I'm in support.
Any other commentary? If not, would somebody like to offer a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance on behalf of Austin Gooden, owner, 11 Hampton Drive, Sheet F, Lot 577, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 22 feet into the 40-foot required rear yard setback to construct an 11-foot by 31-foot roofed cover over existing deck. This is located in the R18 cluster zone in Ward 1. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. This applicant has been here before, did receive a variance for the deck. Basically, this is just an addition over half of the deck, right up against the house, so there'll still be additional open deck going towards the property behind, which is wooded. There is no immediate neighbor behind. We do not have any opposition, as there was the first time with the deck. As the, as the board did discuss, we believe that this certainly fits into the landscape of the area at this point. We do believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We have no, no testimony either way about the property values, but there are many houses in that area with decks on the back of their, of their properties. This is not contrary to public interest. Once again, the applicant's property is right up against some common land, which is primarily woods, and substantial justice would be served. For those reasons, I would propose that we approve this variance.
Thank you, and seconded by Mr. Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor? And that passes unanimously, so your, your application has been approved. You can proceed with the project. Again, there is a 30-day window of appeal, so somebody could, if they did have an issue, could still file a rehearing request. If you have any questions about that, you can certainly contact Mr. Fox, but there's nothing stopping you from moving forward now. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You have two years in which to get a building permit, so you're good.
All right, and that will bring us to case number four. The owners are Frederick J. Junior and Barbara S. Murphy. The address is 11 Essex Street, Sheet 61B, Lot 64. The request is a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1, to exceed maximum driveway width where 24 feet is permitted, 10 feet is existing, an extra 20-foot by 20-foot driveway addition is proposed for a total width of 30 feet. This is in the RA zone, Ward 4. Welcome, name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Fred Murphy, 11 Essex Street, with my wife, Barbara, and my daughter, Ellen. My other daughter and my grandkids are at home. And so we, we just moved in last Christmas. Don't ever move between Christmas and New Year's, but we did. Since we've been here, it's one straight driveway. We've got three cars now, my, my other daughter moved in with us. We need, need some place to put them, because at the time, I'm in the, I'm in mud, parking in the mud in the yard, so I need to just extend half a driveway, hard enough so we can put some more cars in it. And Bob, Monia, Tuna, he inspected it already, he came by and took that. So we just want to have, yeah, we just need the parking space, so that I can use a snowblower on and such, so I can put a snowblower through the yard, you know, so I can get off the street. There's no parking on the street, so we're stuck there. It won't affect the neighbors. There's a different type of drivers, size of driveways in the neighborhood now. And I've only been here for a year, I have no experience at this, so.
I can see if the board has questions for you, and we can go from there. Mr. Sylvia?
You can first.
Go ahead.
Are all three cars used regularly?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's, just in terms of the hardship, did you pursue any other alternatives to this? Is it possible to park in the street, or?
Park in the street once, I got a ticket.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. And, and the neighbor at 13 Essex Drive, Essex Street, excuse me, had no issues, it sounds like?
No issues.
Is there a reason why one, you know, at least two of the cars couldn't park tandem if you had a, say, 20-foot wide or 24-foot wide drive?
Just a matter of opening and closing doors, having room to get in and out, both my wife and my daughter handicapped. And I'm, I'm not as spry as I used to be either. Just need room to get in and out. And parking is, it's important, especially in the, in the bad weather. It doesn't, it doesn't have to do with anybody.
My name's Arlen Burgess, I moved in over the summer to reside with my family. There's also an existing structure that's already blocking that, and then if we were to try to go back further next to that, we would have to take down trees that have...
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. So, there's already an existing structure that's behind the, there's a shed that's already there, and then if we were to try to go back in the one next to it, there's a tree there that already houses, like, multiple forms of wildlife, there's lots of different birds that are, we would have to, like, dig out that tree to be able to go back, and that just seems really excessive for...
If I, I'm sorry. Could you give your name for the record, please?
Arlen Burgess, B-E-R-G-E-S.
If I may, I don't think my question was understood. Is there a reason why, you know, at least two cars, if you had a 24-foot wide driveway, is there, and obviously, you've got the depth, is there a reason why one car can't park behind the other?
We've tried to stack them, they don't, there's not enough space with...
To stack two cars?
Yeah, there's a minivan at my dad's giant Buick, or whatever he drives, they just don't fit to the road. They'd be sticking out over the road with the existing structures. I don't know if the measurement, that, they're a tiny bit too short, but to risk having it sticking out into the street just doesn't seem safe for walking purposes, since there's no sidewalk on the street either. People walk pretty close to the property lines.
Last, last winter, when we had only two cars, I parked, we had one driveway, two cars, I had to park off at angles into the yard with both cars, so it was two cars in the dirt, and when you shut, when you have a snowblower trying to clear the driveways, you have to go past them, clear the front and move one out, and clear that, and then move the other one out, so it's inconvenient to be doing that, and it's safer to just have the room.
Mr. Lainey?
It looked to me as if this driveway extension had already been created and paved, is that correct?
I didn't, I didn't.
It looked to me as if this 20-foot by 20-foot extension had already been created.
Yeah, I didn't, I've only been here a year, I didn't know there were, there were problems. I was in Derby, and I put a driveway in Derby, but with the same pavers, and I never concerned myself with variances or anything. So, I absolutely came down, I said, I have to put the 20 by 20 in front of the tree, it's on the side of the yard, and he said, okay, and made an appointment, we came down and did it. And we had, like, one foot to go to finish it, and you were inspected after the drive-by, and he said, well, you're going to have to get a variance. I said, I didn't have any clue about that, I had no idea of anything, so I come down for a, put in for a variance. But, as I said, we only had a foot left to go, so we couldn't stop then. While I was talking to, well, excuse me, they finished the driveway while he was parked right there, we had to get out of the car, we finished, they finished it while he was there. So, it was, it's a pretty good job, safe, and it's not an eyesore or anything, and it's safe, pretty safe to park there now.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
On this depiction you have here, where's the garage, is that the shed you mentioned?
I don't have a shed, it's just a garage.
Or, what, what did you say before, that there was something that you wouldn't want to push back?
There's a, there's a building, yeah.
Is that the, there's a building?
Yeah.
So, if it's a garage, can you store vehicles in there?
No, I've never been able to get a garage.
It's, it's very evidently a very old garage, and it's tiny inside, so.
When I moved into the house, I bought the ladies deceased a ride-on lawnmower and a regular lawnmower, and a snowblower, and a smaller snowblower, and it's just not, there's no room in it for anything.
So, it's more of a storage area than a garage, basically?
I know, yeah. He uses it for workshops, so.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I think we're all set, thank you. And I'm assuming your wife doesn't want to provide any testimony, she's the only other one in the audience, so I think we're, we don't have...
I think she'll be satisfied.
Okay, all right, so you can have a seat, thank you. So, see, that there's nobody else here in the audience other than the applicant's family, we will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, comments? Mr. Busher?
Driving through the neighborhood, I noticed that there are several other driveways right on Essex Street, two driveways that are at least 30 feet, run right, and then the house on the corner of access to Amherst Street also, and then on the street over. So, it's not untypical to have a wider driveway in the neighborhood. I also noticed that, as I went back around, I noticed, as the houses on the other side, where they have the wider driveways, the house is closer to the street on that side than the other houses. So, I, I was thinking the same thing about stacking, but then I did drive by when the gentleman's truck was there, a big vehicle they have, and so, I now know that it would be sticking out a little bit into the road, because I was thinking the same thing, why not 24? And then, looking at the property and the scale of the property, would, yeah, I would, I would notice that it's a little wider, but I, I think we're looking at a 10-foot driveway, and it seems like a big jump to 30 feet, but what we're, what we're really looking at is an extra six feet over the 24. As I looked at what was done there, I, I, you know, if it was coming to us without having done before, would I still consider it the same way? My thought would be still the same. So, because it's done doesn't make me think that I won't approve because of that, I'm just looking at the, kind of, the, where it is, how it's situated on the property, and what else is going on in the neighborhood. So, I think there is some reasonable way, reason why to have that, to put really three cars, you know, side by side.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Mr. Sylvia?
I, I think the fact that all three cars are used regularly institutes a hardship. If one of them wasn't, possibly, they could be put in storage, but they're all used frequently, and it looks like there's no room in the quote-unquote garage behind that they could put it, or the street. And also, I believe the disabilities of some of the residents also institute or hardship, so I just wanted to note that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. McCarr?
I'm still struggling a bit with this one. If I could get there, it's because of the depth of the lot between the garage. Yeah, I, I think the measurement that is shown on the plan, the 34 feet, is from the edge of pavement, the edge of the road, not the front property line. So, more likely, you obviously have less, there is no sidewalk, it doesn't mean, there couldn't be a sidewalk in the future, you couldn't park in a way that would block the sidewalk. So, if I were to get there, that would be why.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neill?
Yeah, when we run into issues like this in the past, you know, things I look at are, can you park in the garage? In this case, just looking at it, I knew the answer was going to be no. It is an older, older facility, so, so that's not an option. I, I'm not sure that 34 feet, as Mr. McCarr was saying, it, it doesn't look to me from what I saw when I was there. I just don't think they can, they can adequately park nose to tail and not be sticking way into the street. I, I am in favor of this application because there's just no depth to these driveways in order for them to, to adequately, it's only three cars. And so, I honestly, I think substantial justice would be not in their, in their favor if we asked them to rip out those extra couple feet. From when I, I did my drive-by, I saw a few cars across, it's not egregious, and it's just, it's just not deep enough to, to, to put anything further up there, so I'm in favor of this application.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my, I am in favor, I mean, it's, I think it's, it's a little bit reluctantly, but I think the depth is, is a big deal, and in a way, we're not talking about a lot of asphalt. But the other thing that's, to me, is compelling is that garage, it's basically more like a functional shed, and the tree. If the tree wasn't there, then I think there is a different argument about being able to take the driveway 24 feet and going, you know, kind of further back and maybe even going along the side of the existing garage. And then, it's a different conversation, but, but taking that tree out, to me, is a, is a big deal, and I don't know that the benefit value proposition is something that is worth it from a code perspective, so, so it's, to me, between the, the non-functional garage and the tree, and the only other thing you could start to talk about are things like, oh, yeah, you could do some angled kind of parking, but to do three cars that way, it's one thing to maybe do two, you might get two in there on a 24-foot wide, but I don't know that there's any way to get a third car before you're, you're still somewhere on, on grass or something, so we're needing further than 24 foot. So, I just feel like there's so many of those constraints, that there's, there isn't a reasonable way to get, get there other than what the applicant has asked for, so I am in favor. Any other commentary? Would anybody like to make a motion? Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Fred J. and Barbara S. Murphy, address 11 Essex Street, Sheet 61B, Lot 64, requesting variance from land use code section 190-17E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 10 feet existing, and an extra 20-foot by 20-foot driveway addition proposed for a total width of 30 feet. This is in the RA zone, Ward 4. The board had extensive discussion about what might be done as an alternative, and it turns out that the special conditions of the property are, there is an existing old garage slash shed that limits the depth, there is a tree that also limits the depth should the applicant have put in a conforming 24-foot wide driveway that went all the way back. And so, we discussed various options, and the majority of the board believes that the applicant's proposal for 20-foot driveway addition is reasonable, and is reasonably feasible, and there's probably no other, no other option that we could think of other than the variance. We, we believe this is within spirit and intent of the ordinance, and is only adding six feet to the allowed 24-feet width of a driveway. The board does not find any evidence that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We don't see any reason that it's contrary to public interest, and substantial justice to the applicant would be served, therefore, make a motion to approve this variance.
Is there a second? Mr. McCarr, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? I'll just note also, we, there was some, a little bit of discussion about that there are other wide driveways in the neighborhood, so it's not out of character. And also, that, that parking for three cars is, is a reasonable request, it's not, not an excessive amount of vehicles that's being asked for to be accommodated, so the three is, 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 like I said, a reasonable request, so I just wanted to also have that in our, in our notes. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? And then that passes unanimously, five zero. So, you're welcome to proceed with the application, although I think in most regards, it's kind of, so, have a good, have a good night, thank you. The final, I guess, the final item on our agenda is the, as far as cases, is a rehearing request, I'll read that into the record. The property owner is City of Nashua, Robie Park. The requestor of the rehearing is Denise Mucci Chioli. The case address is Lance Pitbrook Road, Robie Park in Nashua. The original, the request for the work is, as originally presented, is City of Nashua owner, Lance Pitbrook Road, Robie Park, Sheet B, Lot 2189. The request is for a special exception from land use code section 190-115, to work in a critical wetland buffer to remove trees and brush, install nine wooden pedestrian bridges, tee pads, disc chain baskets, directional signage, wetland markers, and trash barrels for a proposed 18-hole disc golf course. This is in the R18 zone, Ward 9, and again, this is a rehearing. So, the case, and the zoning board did approve this case on October 22nd. So, our four questions before us, I'll just read them first, and then we can go through and discuss them. So, number one is, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. Number two, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? Does, number three, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? And number four, is there anything which would slash could cause the board to make a different decision? So...
Just, I'm wondering whether I should recuse myself, since I was not present at that meeting.
I mean, you're certainly, I mean, you're welcome to, I mean, it's really your choice, I guess, so.
Yeah.
I guess the question, you know, this is, and I know you're very good about reading the meeting notes, and probably watching on YouTube, the playback.
Well, no, I didn't do that.
Oh, all right, you missed a good one. So, I mean, that being said, if you feel like you can make a good decision based on what you read in the notes, I would say, don't recuse yourself, but if you don't feel comfortable, if you feel like you don't have...
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, I just wasn't sure whether...
And, and the other, the other thing is, we're really primarily judging what has been presented to us by the requestor, so that's, that's really what we're looking at, so.
Okay.
All right. Again, just for those that might be watching, all of us can still participate and have the discussion, but ultimately, it'll just be the five full-time members that are voting on the case. So, we've gone through this in different ways in the past, and I know we've also had some recent guidance from Corporation Counsel regarding just how we kind of handle some of our motions in general, so I guess just before we start, I just wanted to see, Mr. Falk, if you have any suggested way we approach this case tonight.
Well, I think the way that this has been handled pretty consistently in the past is, the chair will read the first question, was there any procedural error, and ask everybody in the board and, and get a con, a concurrence from everybody, yes or no, just go through each of the, the points, but the motion should have more detail. No, we don't believe that there's a procedural error because all the butters were notified, the ad was in the paper, or for example...
Those kind of things, yeah.
Just add some details to the, to the answers instead of no.
Just read them for...
Right. I just start with the first one and go through...
Which is what I thought we've done normally.
One overall motion.
Yeah. Just one more question. So, to record this, Mr. Falk, I have each question here, and there's no, yes, and then the vote, so is there going to be a vote on each question after?
That's usually the way we do it.
And, and right, do we record who, if there's, no's and yeses, in the names of the no's and yeses?
Doubt, doubt.
Yeah, okay, all right, sure, thank you.
Okay, so, so we'll start with the first question. Was there any procedural error? And this includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. We can just kind of maybe go around and, you know, kind of change up the order, but Mr. McCarr, you can start with this one.
Sure, I, I do not believe so, I, I do not believe that any procedural error was alleged. The focus in the rehearing request is, is really around... The focus in the rehearing request is really around what are claimed to be inconsistencies in the way testimony was received. There, I'm not aware of any procedural error on the part of the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neely.
There was no issues with improper notice. The discussion in the rehearing request around denying folks the right to be heard was more based on folks being given too much time to speak. I do believe when we had this last hearing, we, the chair was much tighter on the time constraints for everybody. If you remember the first time, they said the applicants had too much time. I do not believe that that occurred in this last case. And when it comes to folks who are given too much time to speak, the chair did a good job not cutting folks off, you know, mid-sentence. But you did a good job holding them to be on topic and wrap it up. We got to go. And so I think, I do not think there's any concerns with that.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Lionel?
I saw no procedural errors.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak to it. I don't think there were any. I think there was definitely a lot of citation, that I had acted with bias, and that kind of thing here, which I do take some umbrage to. And I did not come in with any predisposed interest in passing or denying this application. I was trying to be my normal open to all the information being presented to us. And admittedly, I think this has been a difficult case. We've heard it multiple times. But I think, I believe I was striving to deal with the difficulties of we don't have exact concise boundaries on even what can be talked about or not in these cases. I know it's supposed to be specific about, you know, the impact on the critical wetland buffer. But the reality is, it's hard to talk about any of these kind of things in the vacuum. So we always have some part of that gray area. And, you know, I think, we try to, I think the board, through practice, all the time I've been on it, I think does try to have maybe a little bit broader latitude than what we necessarily need to. But I think it's, we try to err on that concern of trying to make sure we get all the inputs. So, but, yeah, so I, but I don't think there was anything that was ultimately biased about it. And I think we did strive to make sure we heard all the relevant testimony. So, and as far as any, anything else, as far as documentation or the notifications, there's no reason to believe any of that was not handled properly, so.
Mr. McCarr.
I just want to make one of the point. The petitioner does also allege that it was an error not to read the detailed request for a rehearing that she had prepared. And I don't believe that was necessary, given the fact that the failure to notify correctly, you know, was a bright line issue, and the board decided to grant a rehearing on that basis. There was no need to consider other bases for granting a rehearing.
And maybe just a priori, there's no way that we are going to read this entire application for the rehearing request into the record. And like we almost never do with any other case, we rely on the written documents that are submitted to us. So I just want to have that on the record as well, just to, I think it's a good reminder that this board does not, by practice, read into the record anything other than typically very short correspondences, and even sometimes those we try to summarize as we highlight those. But generally, the point is that this information is part of the permanent record, is part of what's documented, is part of the case record. So it is with the case and does not mean it's not part of it just because it doesn't get read into the record directly, so.
And Mr. Chair, if I can just add, obviously, I know the folks watch this. All the board members I know read all these submissions. So we do take our time to read every, every piece of documentation that comes through. So while it may not be read into the public here, we certainly are provided by staff in multiple ways. And we do take time to read through all that documentation.
Yes. Usually, we have upwards of a week or more before we are here at the meeting as well. Okay, so I think we could go ahead and take a vote on the first question. Is that what we're going to do? Or should we go through all four?
You could take a vote on each one and then make one wrong decision.
Since we have the fresh discussion there, would anybody like to make that, or I can, if folks would prefer?
Can you just poll us as to whether we say yes or no for each question?
Oh, that's true, yeah.
We're not making...
Yeah, then vote at the end. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay. So, Mr. McCarr, your opinion, was this a procedural error of any kind?
No.
Mr. Neely?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Lionel?
No.
And Mr. Shaw's a no. That's five no's. So we all agree that we do not believe there was any kind of procedural errors regarding the hearing request. Secondly, is, again, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception in this case?
We just voted on number one. Didn't we just vote on number two?
No, no. No, we were voting on number one.
Okay.
And now we'll discuss number two, and then we'll do the poll kind of on that.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So, Mr. Neely, your thoughts?
This was a legal decision. As we had discussed earlier, the scope was only the wetlands. And there was a lot more information that folks did want to talk about. That's not under our purview. We're only here to talk about the wetlands. And I do believe that when we did the, addressed the points of law, that we more than adequately addressed the points of law for why we made the decision.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boucher?
No.
You don't believe, you believe it was a legal decision, right?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just, I just want to make sure I understood what your kind of opinion was.
Yeah, no, I agree with Mr. Neely.
Mr. Lionel?
I believe it was a legal decision.
And I also believe it was a legal decision. I believe that we, you know, pretty much as Mr. Neely will restate it. Mr. McCarr?
Yeah, I agree. It was a legal decision, and I think the board very carefully considered each criterion.
All right. Any other comments about this item? Otherwise, we'll just kind of go again for the kind of polling of opinion. So, Mr. Neely?
No.
No. Mr. Boucher? Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw's a no, and Mr. McCarr?
No.
All right. So, moving on to the third question. Does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Let's start with Mr. Boucher.
No. Again, we were presented with the person that was at the customer hearing. There was, and that threw the whole packet again, and we read it. There was nothing new in this packet. So, I mean, it's very simple. It's not simple, but it's very clear to me that there is nothing new in the packet. It's basically...
All right, thank you. Mr. Lionel?
There is no information, there's a lot of irrelevant things in the rehearing request. I didn't see anything in the rehearing request that was new, relevant information.
I did not either. Mr. McCarr?
No, I did not.
And Mr. Neely?
I did not see any new information.
Okay, we'll go around for the polling vote then. Mr. Boucher?
No.
And Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw's a no, Mr. McCarr?
No.
And Mr. Neely?
No.
Okay. And then the fourth question. Is there anything which would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Lionel?
I didn't see anything that would have, would make me want to make a different decision.
I likewise don't, mostly because of the previous three questions. And again, the fact that there was, there was nothing new or newly relevant. So I don't see that this gets satisfied anyway. So no, I don't see that we would have decided differently.
Mr. McCarr?
No. And to the extent that it's relevant, I just want to add, I think that all the board members spent a great deal of time reviewing this application and all the related materials, all of the testimony that was submitted. You know, walked the site, saw the flagging, you know, saw where the paths were going to be. So I do believe that the board made a very informed decision.
Thank you. Mr. Neely?
All of the information provided, or additional information in this packet, the rehearing request, we heard either in person, from testimony, or from documentation from other folks. There's no additional information here that would cause the board to make a different decision.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Again, saying there was nothing new that I saw that would have caused myself and I believe the board to make a different decision.
And then we'll do our polling vote. Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw's a no, Mr. McCarr?
No.
Mr. Neely?
No.
And Mr. Boucher?
No.
Okay, so we have all unanimously identified as no's for all four questions. So I believe we are ready for a motion that would be, that we do not grant the rehearing request based on none of the four questions being satisfied. And so would somebody like to make that motion, again, with some details noting the justification for why we feel each question is a no? Mr. McCarr, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the request for a rehearing from Denise, I believe it's Musilio, for the City of Nashua, L Spitbrook Road, Robey Park, that decision requesting a special exception from land use code one ninety-one fifteen to work within a critical wetland buffer to remove trees and brush, install nine wooden pedestrian bridges, T-pads, disc chain baskets, directional signage, wetland markers, and trash barrels for a proposed eighteen-hole disc golf course be denied. We find that there was no procedural error, there was no improper notification, and no one was denied the right to be heard. Clearly, the applicant disagrees with the way the hearing was conducted. But again, there was no error, and no one was denied the opportunity to be heard. It was not an illegal decision. The board carefully considered each of the points of law required for the special exception and the special conditions. And the rehearing request submitted does not contain any information, new information, that's relevant to the case that was not available at the time of the hearing or, in fact, provided at the time of the hearing or as a part of the application package. And there is nothing that would cause the board to make a different decision.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Neely? Is there any discussion on the motion to deny the rehearing request? Seeing none, all in favor of the denial, and that passes unanimously, five-zero. And so if the, if the requister is interested in pursuing this further Superior Court is their next option, right? All right, that takes care of that part of business. We do have minutes from the November twenty-sixth meeting.
I have a comment. In the boilerplate section in the front, it talks about comments by telephone and real-time comments via audio, which we don't do anymore. Does that section really, those words need to be there still?
Oh, in the explanation of the procedures, right. That's a good point.
Yeah, we could probably take that out, because we don't do, that was a Zoom issue.
Yeah.
We don't probably take calls in by telephone anymore.
Right.
I can take that out.
We have recently, by exception, right, but that's not the normal practice now.
Yeah, because, you know, I did not talk about...
Yeah, that's just a...
Just a carryover.
Yeah, I, normally, I just kind of skip over that part, and I looked at it, I said, we...
I've got to admit, I skip over that part.
So do we.
Obviously.
That's the thing with boilerplates.
Change the name. Whoever makes the move.
Any other items? Otherwise, would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-sixth as existing.
And Mr. McCarr, a second? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. That passes. We do not have an upcoming agenda because we do not meet again until January.
Till next year?
January fourteenth. Okay, thank you, so. Yeah, right, so we have like a five-week, five-week gap this time, yeah.
Well, we do.
Any other business, otherwise, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Mr. McCarr?
Yes, it is.
By Mr. Neely, all in favor? And that passes. We adjourn at seven fifty-five.
Nice.